And Telecommunications Commission Public Hearing for Monday, August 26, 2024. I'm Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council and Chair of the Cable Video and Telecommunications Commission. First, I would like to do a roll call of all of our Commissioners, Commissioner Bracy.
Present.
Commissioner Fields. Commissioner Fields. I'll come back. Commissioner Cabrera.
Present.
Commissioner Parikh.
Present.
Commissioner Goff. Commissioner Fields. She might be having audio problems. I do see her. She is a little long. And does anyone see Commissioner Goff?
No.
Okay. And Commissioners Kelly Williams, John Rago, and Terrence Williams have asked to be excused. I would also like to acknowledge others that are in attendance this afternoon. Michelle Bassnight, Senior Legislative Advisor and CFO for City Council. John Stanton, Assistant City Solicitor. Anita Hawks, Legislative Admin Assistant. Stephanie Murgler, Deputy Chief of Staff for the Mayor's Office. Gary Letterer from BBK Law. Caitlin Gainley from Comcast. Ivan Thomas from DETV. And Moises Velasquez from EDTV. Commissioners, if you can just please take a few minutes just to review the draft minutes from our June 27, 2024 CBT meeting. And I'll accept the motion to adopt the June 27, 2024 CBT minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second to adopt the June 27, 2024 CBT minutes. I'd also like to recognize Wendell Ralston, Station Manager for WITN. And we also like to recognize Commissioner Bob Goff. Moving to new business, we are going to review the Ordinance 24039, an ordinance approving the five-year extension of the Comcast franchise agreement. If outside council, Gary Letterer is with us, may he please come forward or please unmute your microphone.
Yes, I'm here, sir.
All right, you're going to present to the Commission the extension for the Comcast franchise.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. And if I could have a sharing capacity, I would share my screen.
Okay. The station has said that they do have your presentation, so they don't have to share.
Oh, fantastic.
All right. We don't have to share. Thank you.
It's nice dealing with pros.
Thank you.
Terrific. So, yeah, next slide, please. Next slide. Funny-looking guy. So our purpose today is just to provide a status of where things stand and to inform you what we've been doing since we last presented to the council. Next slide, please. Keep on. Again, just as a reminder to everyone, in 2012, City Wilmington granted a 12-year franchise to Comcast. That franchise will expire on November 18, 2024. If one were to ask me to objectively analyze the terms of that franchise, it would be that the terms are very robust. 12 years ago, it was pretty contentious. And at the end of the day, Wilmington wound up with a very robust franchise, a franchise that quite honestly has better terms than communities the size of Wilmington around the country have. So if that's the case, then we find ourselves that we're running out of time, that we are not eligible for any PEG support in a holdover status. And so Comcast suggested, I think very generously.
Excuse me? I'm sorry. Mr. President, can I please be noted as President?
Yes, we acknowledge you. I acknowledge your presence here on the Commissioner Fields. Thank you. Okay, you may continue. Sorry about that.
Sure. So we found ourselves in a position where we had expended all the PEG funds or we exhausted PEG funds that we're entitled to. It was probably not realistic to believe that we could do a formal renewal Comcast offered, and we accepted the idea that we should sit down and we should explore whether or not we could simply do an extension for five years. There have been other extensions that have been done around the country, and they've worked out. Next slide, please. And so with that in mind, our extension negotiations were guided by keeping what we have and amending for what we need, right? And so, for instance, in the build-out section, our goal was to be able to say that every resident in the city of Wilmington would have access to Comcast service. Under the existing franchise, if you lived a certain amount away or the density was not significant enough, Comcast could charge you an aid in construction. That will now disappear with this new extension. Next slide, please. I just wanted to make clear to everyone that there is a distance requirement, but that's only if the city were to annex any area. So every resident of the city of Wilmington today, when this extension is granted or agreed to, every single resident has the right to require Comcast to provide service to them at no additional cost for construction. Next slide, please. PEG support, as I said, we had significant PEG support in our 12-year franchise, but the way that it was distributed, the timetable, we were now out of money. We had no right to make a claim against Comcast for PEG unless we renewed or we did an extension. What we've done is we've in fact done that at a minimum over the next five years. Comcast will have to provide $450,000 in PEG support. And in fact, that number is the floor. It will probably be higher than that because if you did 95 cents per sub per month today, that number results in a number that's north of $100,000. So again, what we've done here is we've taken a situation where we had no money coming in. We had no enforceable claim for money for PEG support. And with Comcast, with Comcast, we have come to an agreement of 95 cents per sub per month with the floor being 90,000. The 95 cents per sub per month is very, very competitive with other franchises around the country. And in fact, I think, you know, I'd like to note that Comcast did increase their support level from the 85 cents they initially proposed to 95 cents. And they did agree that there would be a floor on that amount for the life of the extension. Next slide, please. So again, that's just the details. Next slide, please. Comcast, in their franchise with us, the 12-year-old franchise, did say that after the fifth year, we could get together and we could make a claim for a high-definition format for our PEG programming if it was offering other systems of comparable size, that type of format. So our goal was to remove that uncertainty and to establish a schedule for high-definition conversions from what we have today. Next slide, please. And we've done that, right? So the goal is that within 90 days of when we ask, we can convert an SD channel to an HD channel. So there's certainty that we're entitled to it, and there's a format, a timeframe for getting it under this extension. Next slide, please. Between when we did our agreement in 2012 and today, there was an FCC determination that actually went up to the Supreme Court in which we, local government, was able to get some modifications of the FCC order. But the bottom line was that in-kind benefits that Comcast provides to the city are eligible for offset against franchise fees unless those obligations are voluntarily granted. And so what this does is it preserves every in-kind benefit that Comcast has been providing to the cities, as services to government, building, schools, et cetera. It preserves those rights, but it also protects the city from being subject to an offset against franchise fees based upon the language of what's called the 621 order. And all parties have basically reserved their rights, but Comcast has made the commitment to voluntarily provide the in-kind services for the life of the extension. Next slide, please. So this is the summary. This just says everything that we've done. I would add one thing here, and that is, since when we presented this to you, what we've done is we've gone through the franchise itself with a fine-tooth comb, and we have met with Comcast to make sure that they could provide us information and certification to our satisfaction, that they were in compliance with the various technical standards, and to ensure, like, we have an insurance requirement, we have an identification requirement, and we have a performance bond requirement. And Comcast, last week, provided us with updated documentation to show that each of those is in fact in full effect. You know, sometimes in 12 years, things can get stale, and we were able to get updated statements. Next slide, please. The one thing that the professional staff of Wilmington asks me to remind you on a regular basis is that we have not also forgotten that another part of our mission is to ensure and try to attract or to induce other providers to come in and offer competitive services. Nothing in this franchise extension, in any way, shape, or form, undercuts the ability of the city of Wilmington to in fact bring an additional provider in. So that's it, Mr. Chairman. I'll take questions, and I know you've got other items on the agenda.
All right, thank you. So before we move on to Caitlin from Comcast, do any Commissioners have any questions or comments? Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments? And seeing no hands raised, we are going to ask Ms. Caitlin Gainley of Comcast to please present to the extension. Thank you for joining us, and please introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Council President Congo and members of the Commission. Thank you for hosting this hearing and allowing us the opportunity to address you. My name is Caitlin Gainley, and I'm the Senior Director of Government Affairs at Comcast, and I'm joined by Stephanie Costa, who is the Vice President of Government Affairs for Comcast Freedom Region. Can I go to the next slide, please? Perfect. Jerry did a wonderful job outlining our five-year extension, but I just wanted to provide a list of benefits within the agreement and an overview then of the services that Comcast offers to the community here. So as Jerry mentioned, we have agreed to five major issues. First, Comcast will provide a 5% franchise fee, which is the maximum allowed by the federal government. This should provide the city with approximately $3.5 million over five years. Second, Comcast has agreed to upgrade all three PEG channels to HD. Third, Comcast will continue to fund the Community Channel with at least $450,000 in support over the next five years. Fourth, Comcast will continue all municipal benefits, including complimentary accounts and customer service obligations. And lastly, we have confirmed that we will and are willing to build fully out to the residents throughout the city. And then beyond the franchise agreement, we'd like to just highlight a couple of things that we are doing throughout the city. So let me start with this slide, Project UP. It is Comcast's comprehensive initiative to advance digital equity to tens of millions of people. Backed by a billion-dollar commitment, Project UP encompasses the programs and community partnerships across Comcast, NBC Universal, and Sky. We have opened nine lift zones right here in the city of Wilmington, which provides students and families with access to free, high-speed internet and Wi-Fi. And those nine lift zones aren't the only partners that we have throughout the city. Some of those partners include NerdIt, Metropolitan Wilmington Urban League, Tech Impact, Code It Differently, the Latin American Community Center, and the Friendship House, just to name a few. Could I go to the next slide? I know we're here to talk about the cable franchise, but we also believe it's important to highlight internet access to the community. So the next slide. Over the last 10 years, Comcast has connected over 10 million low-income Americans to internet access, 148,000 of those being connected right here in Delaware. Our Internet Essentials program kicked off in 2011 right here in the city of Wilmington, and since then, our price has stayed the same at $9.95 per month. Next slide. As many of you may be aware, the Affordable Connectivity Program ended this past May due to a lapse in funding from the federal government. It's important that customers understand that Xfinity is committed to helping our ACP participants find the right package to stay connected to fast, reliable internet at an affordable price. This includes Reliable Internet and Internet Essentials Plus, as well as, in addition to the new program recently introduced called NOW, a new line of reliable, low-cost products that customers can purchase month to month with no credit checks or additional fees. Next slide. And as you can see here on this slide, Comcast has speeds to meet everyone's needs. We're committed to the city of Wilmington and working with you and your residents to help end the digital divide. Next slide. And finally, at our last meeting, the question came up about customer service, so I want to address that here. I've included this new slide that shows the service, "We're there when you need us." Our goal is always to provide the best customer experience. We do our best to respect your time with our two-hour appointment windows and to simplify your experience. There are more than a dozen ways to contact us, including text, chat, email, phone, retail, and many different online platforms. We have two stores located within a 15-minute ride of downtown Wilmington. And at these stores, you can demo our products, exchange equipment, pay bills, or get answers to your questions. Our Xfinity app allows customers to triage issues and manage all aspects of their account 24/7. And lastly, we have customer service agents that are also available 24 hours a day at 1-800-XFINITY. I understand that wanting to speak with a customer service agent can be a frustrating experience, but 97% of our customers first opt for the digital support. And 82% of those customers report getting the support they need without talking to an agent. We're doing our best to make sure our customers who want to speak with an agent are able to do so, and we will continue to make investments to provide the best customer experience. So at that time, at this time, if I can answer any questions from the Commission, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. You mentioned lift zones.
Yes.
Can you speak to those, just what they are and where they are?
Absolutely. So during, in 2020, we had launched our Lift Zones, which was an initiative where we partnered with nonprofits throughout communities. And we offered one gigabit of service at no cost to the nonprofit, as long as they could open it up to the community to allow residents to utilize the facility so they had access to free Wi-Fi and internet. We have nine still actively running throughout the city, and the partners we have have been wonderful.
The original goal was to bridge that gap during COVID, where kids were being sent home to their households that may not have an internet connection at home and provide a safe place where they could learn. And then it expanded, obviously, communities, the elderly, the, you know, people searching for jobs. Everybody needed that resource. So these became hubs, and we saw the need for it to continue after COVID. So we're continuing with our nine sites here so that people can learn, get connected to jobs, and get connected with each other at the safe learning centers, which are often at nonprofits.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do any Commissioners have any questions or comments? Michelle Bassnight?
Yes. I just wanted just to state, just for the record, just so we can have it on our record, is if we go back to the first slide that Comcast has presented, I just want to share with the Commissioners, because we will talk about this later on regarding solvency. But the 5% franchise is going to be $3.5 million, as Comcast has shared. I just want the Commission to know that the number of subscribers has dwindled immensely. And as such, you know, that impact amount of money, we get to cover our WITN operations. So WITN operations is roughly anywhere from 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars. So I just want the Commissioners just to be aware that later on down the road, you know, we do have to look to be able to do things differently, but I just wanted just to put it on the record.
Okay, thank you. Do any other Commissioners have any questions or concerns? Is there anyone from the public who has any comments, questions? Yes, you can come up to the podium, please, and please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Jim Miller. I'm with Out and About Magazine. And I want to thank you all for making that great presentation. I just had one question about the $450,000. It said at least $450,000. I think it was item number three on the five items. I don't know if you can bring that back up, but that screen back up. It talked about a donation of, I believe, $450,000 for community, there we go, for community channels. It guaranteed at least $450,000. How is that, like, when you say at least, what does that mean? Does it mean it could be more than that, and how is that determined?
Yes, it can be more than that. Jerry actually explained that in his presentation.
I must have missed it. I'm sorry.
That's okay. In our negotiation, we had agreed to 90 cents per sub per month, oh, 95, sorry, thanks, John, 95 cents per sub per month with a bottom tier of a max or a minimum of $90,000 per year. So at 90,000 times five, you have at least 450, but in the first and second year, you may see higher amounts than that.
Okay. And how does that reflect on, I'm sorry, what you just said about the subscription rates? Does that have any impact on that number at all?
Yes, because when the word "sub" is mentioned, it stands for subscribers. So as the number of subscribers go down, I mean, that impacts the number. So the bottom amount is 95 cents per subscriber. But if you have 10,000 subscribers now and come next month, you know, then come, you know, a couple of months later or something, so say, and it's go down to 8,500, you know, that number changes. So it impacts the bottom line that we get.
So when it says guaranteed 450,000, is that still a guarantee of 450,000?
Yeah, it is.
It's a commitment. Okay, okay, that's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Wendell Ralston, Station Manager from WITN.
Good evening, Wendell Ralston, Station Manager with WITN, Government Assistant Channel. I just wanted to state my support for this five-year extension. I'm glad to see that that floor is in place for the support funds in addition to the commitment for being able to convert our channels to HD. I think it's really important, especially for us as the government channel, to be able to operate and continue our support or our ability to present the transparency of government, as well for our public and education channels to be able to provide support for the community.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will hear from EDTV, Moises Velasquez.
Hi, thank you, guys. How are you doing? We want to appreciate the opportunity to speak. We apologize for not being there in person. Today is our first day back to school for all of our 30-year extension programs. We really want to thank you guys, first and foremost, for allowing us to have the network and to promote the great things happening here educationally. and to promote the great things happening here educationally. We have 30 programs here in the Red Clay School District, and we're pushing live, learn, work. And it's important to me personally, because I lived here, I learned here, and now I currently work here as executive producer of EDTV. And the majority of our schools currently have morning announcements that they operate live, even from the kindergarten all the way up to high school. In fact, they're operated, with the exception of Cap Cowley, which is primarily focused on arts, all the high school programs have a videotape program within their networks. So, to have this opportunity for students to be able to see that this is something that is, you can create a career out of it, and then see the district really creating content, putting it out there at a high quality, and then being able to submit for awards and ultimately receiving awards. For example, we won an Emmy 2019, we received four, five official nominations. It just means a lot to us and to the community that we have, we have 16,000 students. So, again, this is really important to us. We really want to thank you guys, and we really are grateful for the opportunity, and as we continue to create new shows and create programming, we're really excited for this opportunity to continue, and we're just here in full support. I think I want to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And from DETV, we will now hear from Ivan Thomas.
Caitlin, it's awesome seeing you again. Last time we seen each other was 2018. I want to say thank you. I think the five-year extension is good, is a good start. You know, since we came on, we created everything from kid shows to a morning show, and since Mois is going to talk about his awards, we're going to talk about ours. We got, was it four, five? Five. Five awards for Best News Broadcast, but that doesn't mean anything to us if the community doesn't watch it, right? And public access and what we're doing, I like to call it the PEG Network, like Voltron, is we have the ability to reach an audience that people can reach. Delaware, we are, it's a hyper-local state, right? And we're the only ones, and when I'm saying "we," I'm saying WITN, Mois and them over that school, and us, DETV, is that we get a chance to talk to people that are left out or forgotten about. And I think that moving forward, this will be a great opportunity for us to just keep doing what we're doing. You know, it's a political season right now, and without us, because people don't, we don't have the newspaper here anymore, this is where we step in, and we've been stepping in and been showing our worth, and people, and the residents of Wilmington, the residents of Delaware, they really like what we're doing. So, I think this is really, really good and really great, so I'm definitely on board.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any comments, questions? Yes, you can come forward to the podium, please, and introduce yourself.
Thank you. Hi. My name is April Johnson. I'm just a local resident in Delaware, but I had a question for you. You said that the funding has been depleted for low-income families for the Internet connection and the tools for the low-income residents. You also stated that there is going to be very little that they would have to pay into the fund to be connected again, right, to stay connected, correct?
So, I was explaining that the Affordable Connectivity Program went away, which was a $30 credit provided by the federal government. And that went away, but Comcast has continued before and after the Affordable Connectivity Program. Our Internet Essentials program is $9.95 a month. That is not going away. That price has not increased over the last 13 years that it's been, it's been here. We have Internet Essentials at $9.95. We have Internet Essentials Plus at $29.95, which doubles the speed. But then we also have our NOW products, which you can pick and choose what works for you, and that's also month-to-month. So, there are some lower-priced scaled products there.
Comcast will have a solution for you, if you, for somebody if they're income-constrained, but we have no control over the federal government ending that subsidy program. We did advocate ferociously for it, and we, you know, and it fell in deaf ears.
I understood that, then. That was going to be my actual question, like, were there going to be concessions made for those low-income families who couldn't afford what those lower concessions would be? I mean, the public, they literally rely on those services for their children to do homework, after-school programs and all of those things. So, for those lower-end families, like, what would that look like for them? And is Comcast trying harder to make sure that those concessions for those families can be made?
So, that is our solution. The Internet Essentials solution is that, that $9.95, it's the lowest price point that we offer anywhere, and we've been in this game for 13 years. This was not something that Comcast woke up and started doing in the pandemic. We knew there was a need. We knew Internet was essential, so we strove to meet that need, and we've had this program going very robustly. We partner with nonprofits to provide connectivity training, you know, security training, even as far as helping people turn on computers. We are funding those programs so that people who are in income-constrained or in certain groups that have not been able to experience digital literacy, for lack of a better word, there are places for them to go. We are happy to continue to partner and fund those partnerships, which will help people get connected. That $9.95 price also, you know, also allows you to access a lot of other programs that Comcast has, including being able to get a device for a reduced cost.
I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
With that also, to Stephanie's point, the $9.95 is, you know, helps individual homes, but as I mentioned to President Congo, we also have nine lift zones, which are community, we've partnered with nine community organizations where they offer free Internet that Comcast has built into their systems, and you can go there to use their lift, we call them lift labs.
I appreciate that. I'm just thinking about, you know, those communities, those people who have trouble, you know, accessing sites, getting to sites, transportation being an issue, and all of the children that actually benefit from those services. So, I was, I'm hearing it, and I'm trying to, you know, just kind of let it absorb in my brain, but I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you may come forward, sir. Please remember to introduce yourself, although you need no introduction.
Dr. Aaron Bass, glad to be here, and just wanted to say thank you. Delaware is a state of neighbors, and it cannot be stressed enough that we need more access to public access. And so, glad to see WITN and also DETV. I can say that seeing DETV's, their, the work they've been doing, people are seeing. And this is not just from coverage of many events take place, it is the individual stories of women, of men that live here in Delaware, and that they're able to not only tell their current stories, but I've watched this group right here also tap back into people's previous stories, because they know them from when they were in different jobs and different roles and neighborhoods they grew up in. And I can tell you that that has a huge impact here in the state of Delaware. So, I would love to see even more support for DETV, for WITN, and for other groups that are doing some great work, because without that Delaware will not be seen, will not be heard, and our people need it. Thank you.
And thank you. Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ian Smith, also known as Jahiti. I am also the Director of Parks and Recreation, but I'd like to speak as Jahiti, as an artist. So, first of all, let me say that having an idea is really cool, but having the right people, passion to move an idea is very important. So, WITN, DETV, Comcast, kudos to you guys in identifying people who have a passion to push the idea. For myself, I'm an artist, a musician, have been for 25 years. So, I have been blessed by having performances that I've had being extended beyond just seeing me live, and it's greatly appreciated. We're talking about how do we support the artists? These are the ways that we support the artists. And lastly, as a person with a minor in political science, and we are in political season, it's so critical that when we have these debates and forums, that there is a place for it to be seen later on. And I'm just so thankful that, it means a lot to me. I push people in conversations, and a share is always a tap away on my phone. So, thank you for allowing that opportunity, and thank you for allowing me to present.
Thank you. Sarah in a black shirt, let me come forward next, please, and then Mr. Miller.
Thanks, President Congo. Sorry I'm late. I just want to introduce myself. I'm a longtime community member here. I've lived in Delaware for all 35 years of my existence, and I'm a TV broadcast professional in a previous life, and I have worked in all six different media markets, and never once in those media markets have come close to what DETV, WITN, and EDTV has here. And I'm talking Philadelphia, Lancaster, Baltimore. They don't have the public access news and information that we have here, so it's super vital, I think, to keep these things going. I get emailed all the time as a community member and resident here about how important it is that we put things out on DETV to show, you know, where I can get my flu shot, where I can get my COVID vaccine. I can't tell you how many emails I got this summer that talked about, "Thank you, I didn't know I can get a free fan for my mother-in-law through the city," and things of that nature. And there's no other outlets where we would be able to let, you know, the elderly and folks who don't have as many resources as others to be able to know about that information. So, I just wanted to say that it was really important that we have that.
All right. Thank you. Can you give us your name, please, sir?
I'm so sorry. Matthew Ford.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Miller.
Hi. My name is Jim Miller. I'm with Out and About Magazine. I want to thank President Congo and the Commission for letting me speak again, and I want to thank the folks from Comcast coming out. This is, we live in a small town. Delaware is essentially a small town. He may not like me saying this, but I actually played baseball when we were young with the President, Mr. President Congo.
I was young. He was like my coach.
Some smack talk happening over there.
No, we were, we were on the same team.
Yes, we were.
But, you know, I've watched Ivan Thomas, DETV, he started in his basement, and, you know, in other markets, we might be seen as competitors. I worked for a print company for more than 30 years, and, but I don't see it that way. And I don't think he sees it that way either. I know he doesn't. What I see is the growth of journalism, and this conversation is a lot about connectivity. So, I appreciate the efforts made to make sure that more people are connected and more people have what they need to find out what's going on in their community and to tell the stories in our community. That's vital. We, we're a monthly magazine. We could be around for 500 years and not be able to tell all the stories. But what I've seen DETV do with now 16 full employees, 20-plus interns, we are growing journalism in the city of Wilmington. We're growing the message. We're growing connectivity. We're telling stories that need to be told. I love that, and I want to see more kids get turned on to that. So, I appreciate what UD, I'm sorry, EDTV is doing as well. If you just look at what DETV's done with the last series of debates, they've been some of the best televised debates in Delaware history. So, the question isn't, do we need these things? The question is, how do we do more of this? How do we expand this? And I'm not, I'm not putting the heat on, I appreciate what's being done right now. But I think to the point that one of the residents had earlier, maybe what we need to do is, if federal government gave us these grants, maybe what we need to do is fight, not fight, but fight for these grants again, and we need to figure out how, how do we make that? Who do we need to talk to to make that happen? It may not happen in this room, but I think these are the right steps that we need to make to make this happen, and I celebrate the fact that we've got diversity, more diversity in journalism in this city, and I think there's room for more, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the Council of Champions? Yes, please come forward. Please remember to introduce yourself.
My name is Gary Phillips. Excuse my attire, I came up from the beach for this. I want to talk a little bit about, maybe about 13, 14 years ago, when I first met Ivan. I am a newly-retired digital media educator within the Newcastle County Tech School District and Colonial. Ivan has been unbelievable. When I first met him, as he was doing things, as he said, in his basement, to where he has taken it now, he's a visionary, and he has hired one of my graduates. He has allowed my classroom to come into his studios. He has come into our studios. So, not only are we talking about programming, we're talking about his connection within the community and finding interns and people that he can hire. If I look at when I first met Ivan and what he was doing to where he is now, I want to think about five years down the road. Where is that going to go? How much is that going to expand? How much bigger? And he has this vision to do things greater than I've ever seen. So, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. You've got a guy here who is going to take public access and least access to all new heights in Wilmington, not only just from the programming, but from reaching out to students who want to be a media producer, who want to be in front of the camera, behind the camera. And he's giving them this opportunity to find their career and do well in it under his leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Any more comments from anyone? Anyone online? Marshelle Bassnight?
Yes. I just want to just mention for the record as well, for this public hearing, we did advertise in our news journal for a couple of days, so, because we wanted to, wanted to have the opportunity for the public to be notified to come in, to participate, and also, Ivan, I know you reached out to some of your sources as well, so we appreciate that as well.
Thank you. Thank you again, ladies. We appreciate you sharing the information with us.
Thank you so much. I just would, just want to say that Jerry was a fierce advocate for you, but always very cordial to us, so we really love that kind of a partnership, someone fighting for their client, but the utmost professional.
All right. Thanks again, Jerry. Yes, Marshelle.
Yeah, and I felt to mention too, so the next steps is, these ordinance do have to be voted out. The Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September the 3rd, and then it will be up for third and final for Thursday, September the 5th.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we are going to have a review of our CBT Fund solvency.
Mr. President, I have my hand up.
Oh, yes. Excuse me.
Sorry, yeah. No, I just wanted to comment, first of all, Red Clay, welcome back. I know that you'll be doing some great things this year. Glad to see the positive leadership that you have in place as you continue with the educational channel. Of course, Ivan, we can't say enough about the work that DETV is doing in the community, as heard with the comments today. We thank you for expanding the coverage to so many people, and the fact that that show is so professional, you would never know that it's not a major network. So, thank you for producing this out of Wilmington, making us all look good. And lastly, and most importantly, Comcast, thank you for really rolling up your sleeves and finding a way to continue with this program, to continue supporting the residents of Wilmington, especially the Connectivity Program, as heard from members in the community that spoke. It's a big concern for people not to have accessibility to the Internet and to continue to keep those prices low and to even come up with some more creative ways to package. I recently saw that, that I could save money on my own bill by packaging things differently. So, just want to thank the work that everyone has done, including our staff, in making this possible, because it's been a lot of work for the last two years as we saw this agreement coming to an end. Thank you for continuing the partnership with Wilmington, even though you weren't required to do it by law. So, just wanted to make those comments before we move on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, you may be excused. I should go.
Are there any other Commissioners that have any comments or questions? Anyone else from the public? If not, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is a review of the CBT Fund solvency. Who is here to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention for the record, so that our Commissioners are aware, the amount of money that's projected for the next five years for 5% for franchise fees is $3.5 million. WITN's operating budget for five years will be roughly $6 million, roughly $1.2 million a year. That's with a staff of five people, somewhere between five to seven freelancers. So, I just wanted, you know, the CBT Commissioners just to know, like, the gap. In addition, over five years, we'll be receiving a minimum of $450,000 for 95 cents per sub. When it comes to our TPO, the base minimum that we pay to cover for rent, that's $510,000. So, that doesn't cover, you know, like, equipment needs that we need to add, done major changes. We currently have roughly $2.4 billion in our We currently have roughly $2.4 million in our fund balance, which I consider our savings account. So for example, when we did our budget for fiscal year 2025, we went into our savings for roughly $350,000. So come, when we're doing 2026, we will have to, you know, also dig into our fund balance, which that balance is not going to really increase because, unless the number of subs ever, you know, increase immensely. So I just wanted just to put this on the record so that our commissioners know, because at some point, you know, there's going to be a tipping point, you know, where we're going to have to be able to do things differently, what that consists of, you know, we would have to, you know, talk about. So I just wanted just to share. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for keeping that at the forefront, Michelle. Are there any questions or concerns from anyone from the public or any commissioners? And seeing no hands raised, next, we will have a review of the draft of the third-party operator for the RFP RFQ. Who is here to speak to that?
Good evening, President Congo. The city's RFP with the third-party operator is required by, our franchise agreement expired in May. The last third-party agreement that was signed was, I think, for three years with three subsequent one-year extensions that lapsed the end of, ended at the end of March of this year. So we opted to put out a new RFP to coincide with the signing of the Comcast franchise extension. I've worked with Michelle on drafting the RFP. We hope to have it out. Per our charter, we have to have two issuances in major newspapers. We're hoping to have them out on Monday, September 9th, and Monday, September 16th, with a due date, date due of Friday, October 11th of this year. Ideally, we have an announcement of a recommendation by Friday, November 1st of 2024, but the RFP, the third-party operator selected, wouldn't start until at least April of, April 1st of 2025, so there's plenty of time in case there are procurement issues.
Okay, thank you, John. Do any commissioners have any comments or questions? Does anyone from the public have anything to speak to? And seeing no hands raised. Again, John, if we want to, I thank you for that information.
Sure. Thank you.
And before we do adjourn, are there any comments or questions from anyone from the Any commissioners, anyone in chambers? And seeing no hands raised, thank you again, everyone, for attending. Again, we want to thank you Comcast, and thank you Jerry for making this happen for the citizens of our city. Definitely look forward to the working relationships that we have with both of you and Ivan and his team and ED TV, and definitely WITN. Thank you so much for everything that you all do. At this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been moved and second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And if anyone would like to contact us about this meeting or any other information, please call us at 302-576-2140. Thank you again, everyone, and meeting is adjourned.